Call the meeting order, please stand for the pledging votes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes of the previous meeting.
Move to approve.
Second. Ooh. We have a motion in a second to approve. Any additions or corrections to the vote? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. I saw that. Could we add? amend the agenda to approve the agenda? Does anybody have anything to add to the agenda?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, and we have a second to approve the agenda as per the discussion. Seeing none on the table, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Roger.
I've got two estimates here to do some carpeting up in public, some of the public health offices. One from Lamont's for 2846 and one from Thompson's for 3297. Three in carpet squares, of course. I see no reason not to go with the bid from Lamont's, so a low bid.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the low bid from Lamont's to do the carpeting of the public health offices. And it's four offices, correct?
Yes.
Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Britt?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries. Is that all you've got?
That's it.
What's the sweep?
We've done it in no time.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Steve, you're up.
All right, I guess the first thing is to, I guess, our annual software maintenance or GIS software is up $3,000, I guess.
Is that the same as last year?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've always shared the $3,000 and then the city picks up the $2,500.
Right.
Every year is the same, so it's a good deal for both of us.
Hope to approve.
Okay. We have a motion to approve paying the bill to ArcGIS, yeah, paying the bill for ArcGIS, and a second.
Aye.
You have a second, further discussion.
What was that?
Uh, that's it.
Okay.
Doing a sneeze.
Yeah.
Put that on record.
Yeah.
Uh, seeing none, yeah, seeing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Olson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up.
I guess the second thing is like to request interstate travel to the user conference for that software again. Yes, I.
And registration for that conference is free with re membership or maintenance on?
Yes.
That's a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
How many days is it?
Five.
Move to approve.
Second, one question. You got to see your budget.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the interstate travel to the GIS conference. That's kind of like a good deal that they, you know, work with them, they wish to be on it.
That's something you've been going through several years and, and got a lot out of it, I, I think, you know.
Yeah, it's, I've been to some of the other more specialized trainings, like in Minneapolis or, and get far less out of that because the software updates so every year that what you learned last year, this one training that end up costing more than, I mean.
You ever talked, talking into a, having a conference in January, so you could go to San Diego or China?
Mortal rates are cheaper.
Okay.
Not bad.
Do we need roll call on this?
Sure.
Okay, roll call, please.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries. And I was gonna say, Steve, I just remembered what you said, I appreciate the fact when you come, you always give us a summary of what you learned and what you went over, because it's always good to know what, you know, what was happening there, so I appreciate that.
Yeah.
You have one more thing, correct?
Yes, I guess, just an FYI that planning to upgrade the GIS server on Friday afternoon, that, so the partial viewer may be down for the afternoon, I guess. Oh, I think everything is set up right, but there's always, gotta coordinate with ITD where they're changing the names of the servers, which, where it's pointed to, but so everything will work, but.
Okay.
Come, come Monday, I think, I would. Everything should be fine.
So this is a new, this is a new server, this isn't a new server, is this an upgraded server?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's a new, completely new, I guess, but nothing.
Is that something you think we should have on our website that it'll be down for temporarily over the weekend maybe, or possibly?
Yeah, I can put out a notice on, on flash, news flash.
That once you try to access it or whatever, too little, or next to where you access it, that it'll be down? Yeah, I think that's, that's a good idea.
And Steve, just from my understanding, is this a, is this a hardware or a software upgrade?
It's both, I guess, hardware and the old one, I guess it's probably six years old now, and it's been upgraded four or five times just software wise that, and it's still on the old Windows Server 2008. So upgrading it to the newer, a newer version.
We ought to probably bring it into the decade, I think.
It's only ten years old, come on.
Yeah.
There are a lot of data on there.
Yeah. The personal viewer works really, really well, I mean.
Yeah.
It's a nice.
Are you one of the best ones in the state?
Yeah, I think we do, too. It's a, it's a nice function.
And everything should be back, I guess, similar to at least what it is by monkey, but it'll be easier to improve once.
Just take your phone off and I'll call when it leaves.
Yeah.
Did you ever make it to Calhoun County, Steve?
Yeah, I went today, this morning.
You went today, okay.
And they're still deciding what they want to do, I guess.
Are you sure yet?
No, they.
They say they don't have online GIS, do they?
No.
They don't have a.
They've got a, through, said, well, they.
Oh, I don't.
Okay, so they were talking about maybe doing something a little different.
They kind of want to do, Steve, right? Well, that's kind of what, who was it, it was Stanley yes?
Yeah. They like what we have and how they could go about getting that and like, they were one asking, I mean, all sorts of questions.
They did?
Yeah, and just even, who around here does that, or like, where could they find more people to? They're probably, they're looking into every possibility, I guess, or hiring somebody else.
To tell me you're going to a conference with 18,000 other GIS.
I told them that there were lots of people at UMD or.
Still lame in the very old place. It's not bad, it's a beautiful town. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Steve was informed on that Calhoun County.
Yeah.
They'll get back to you, you know.
All right.
Uh, highway department agenda, Kevin, as you said last week, couldn't be here for this meeting, so we could just go down the agenda. We got some more summer maintenance contracts in, I think, is this the remainder of, or is your?
Um, Dry Lake was one more.
Okay. Did, oh, do they, did that come in?
Yeah.
So we're adding that in. Okay, so we're signing Cooley, Flinchstone, Northfield, Overland, South Midewalk, and Triumph, and Dry Lake would be the motion for that on here.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve signing, uh, several maintenance contracts with those telechips, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, bid results for projects and supplies that were opened on April 6th.
We are doing all the other, or we have the?
Yeah, just the bid list, that's probably the easiest. Uh, and I can just say what the different bids were, and then we can go from there, I guess we could do it one at a time. So the gravel projects on six and four, Silver Construction had the low bids on both projects at 34,200 for number six and 37,800 for number four.
Move to approve on the low bid for Silver Construction.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the low bid for Silver Construction. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Chip Seal project, Kevin says he recommends that we award the low bid for Ramsey County 2, Crater Road, Woods Rotten, and the terminal loan to Morris Seal Coat. They have done our chip seals for the past 10 years or so, and they're, they have the low bid at 335, 375.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the bid for Morris Seal Coat. For the chip seal projects. Further discussion. We don't need roll call, I guess, do we? Uh, not to the bill, right? Yeah, we should forget. Okay, good. Okay. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, and hot mixed overlays, Kevin says I recommend that we accept the quotes from both Strata and Tri-State paving in case Strata's plant is not set up and running, and Strata will be doing the overlay patches.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve bits from both Strata Corporation and Tri-State paving.
So Tri-State's gonna be a contingency acceptance, is that right? That Strata can't perform the function?
Yeah.
They're kind of getting bad together, aren't they?
I don't even know in all of this. Yeah, because their price is the same, yeah, they both have the low bid technically, so.
They go with the same bid, so.
Yeah, this is what we've cut, we've done in the past, this way, too, I think, just.
I like to take the oil out of the same tank. I'm pretty sure they do. I think Kevin sent that.
Okay, motion in a second to approve that, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. And road oil, we had bids for MC 800 and MC 3000. Kevin wrote, since we use more MC 800, I would recommend that we award the quote from Cali Met Superior.
Which was. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, that was the low bid at $562 every time. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Oh, you want that one, sorry. The one dated right on it. Um, did he, did Kevin have the results on left-in leftover like this?
Um, that should have been laying on your desk.
Oh, no, this is.
It came by email.
Oh, okay, fair enough. So this was all stuff we're using federal money on, so this is things that were bid through Bismarck for Ramsey County, one Military Road, while I drive in the Terminal Road. Appears as though Strata got the low bid at 885, 958, 14. What is the DVE? Any idea? The DVE, the percentage there?
Oh, I don't know.
I'm just curious, because some of them are higher and some of them are lower.
Is that a down payment?
I was wondering if maybe it's the percentage of the total, that's the mobilization fee or something, because some companies use mobilization fees in some zone, I think.
Yeah, you don't have the certification, which on the day.
No, because he, he didn't have, he didn't have the bids, uh, at that time.
I'm, I'm thinking it's like due by, you know, 90% due by whatever, I don't know.
I don't, yeah, that's a good question, that's what I was just looking at, the bid number there and seeing what it is here.
On his email that goes with that, it says this bid is for a thin-lipped overlay paving project to hand him out at the meeting. I don't think the state will have the contract ready, but I did get that by email today. If you could make a motion to accept the low bid from Strata, um, he did have a million dollar budgeted for it. We were estimating around 984,000, um, and Strata is almost 98,000 under what we estimated.
That's a good deal.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to award the bid for thin-lipped overlay, this is somewhere to Strata Corporation with the low bid. Further discussion.
Just curious to know what 2.35% is.
I don't know.
Well, Kevin's making a recommendation, I trust him.
Yeah, well, that's fine, I just.
Okay, well, I'll ask Kevin when we see him.
We should maybe do a motion, this is the contract to go with, yes, that was part of his, you know, that he didn't know if we were gonna get it. It's just a resolution that you have to sign and send it back to the state.
Oh, so the motion we're making now is to accept it, and then we'll need a motion to sign the contract, is it? Okay, who made the motion?
I did.
Who made the second?
I did.
Is it okay if we wrap in just signing the contract or rewarding the contract at the same time? Okay, I think that's fine, so.
Couldn't have?
Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. And just for informational sake, Kevin, obviously you said our pickup and service body is done, and it should be here in two to three weeks. Okay. I said, we're gonna ask here again. Okay. Uh, new business, excuse me, discussion on Lake Access Board Conference.
Okay, at our last, at our last meeting, we sat here for quite a bit of time and discussed Lake Access, good on and off GIS, et cetera, et cetera. Suzie was here. After the meeting was adjourned and I left the building, then there was discussion about me being on board for Lake Access. I have tried continuously to get Suzie to mail me out a copy of the agenda, which she kind of refuses. Basically told me to get into 21st Century because she's too busy to, to mail me agenda, and, you know, I guess I'm just too busy to fight with her. So if somebody else wants on on board, how about it? I just thought it was in very, very poor taste to sit here and talk about it in front of the board, and then agenda, adjourn the meeting, and then after I leave the meeting, then talk about it. I found that was in very poor taste, so I guess I don't want to deal with it anymore. So if anybody would like my position, it's more than available.
Just one thing to add, they asked for removal of Commissioner, I was chairman, which would have been, what, the year, I don't know, four years ago, I worked on that. In like, in July, I said no, right, I was at the end of the year.
Okay.
But I met with them, I was there to change, they called me out there and me.
Well, this is.
I had to put up with it till the end of the year, but it was, maybe it was even August, because it was like, wow, we don't have much fishing season left here, so.
So this, this is essentially the same situation then?
Yeah, well, I didn't get board member. We're going to the meetings, and they were just surrounding with a board member.
Well, I would attend meetings if I knew when it worked, and, you know, because I attend every meeting that, you know, comes up, and I requested, and no, she's too busy and doesn't have time, and. It's not that I'm missing meetings because I don't want to go to the meetings, it's missing meetings because I don't know when meetings.
I don't, each of these portfolios that they have, free passes, and they can pick for Commissioner if they want, I don't, but that's right. It's what Commissioner, we assign, or we as a commission group, you know, reprompt. Just for the fact that I'm sending a letter, that's.
Well, I, I did, I did do some checking to see if.
Wait, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
That's pretty childish, to use that as an excuse.
But then, and they did send a letter to me, so I wasn't aware, and it was.
But I did check to see if she was required to send me a letter if I asked for it, and she was.
Oh, from, from the standpoint of meeting, just, yeah, meeting announcement and things like that? Okay.
So just, just to clarify, because I feel like two different conversations are happening here, Mark, you of your own volition, no longer wants to have, have a seat on that, is that correct?
Well, I just, you know, I, I guess I'm very disappointed in the behavior, you know, I asked for a copy of when their meetings were, and, and were basically told, you know, no, get in, get into the 21st century. And to talk about me after the fact that I leave the building is just childish, you know, if you've got something to say to me, I mean, you and I don't agree on things, though, because, and we'll talk about it, but then we're done, you know?
Sure, and, and, yeah, and, and I, I understand exactly where you're coming from, I just want to clarify, because, because it, you know, listening to what Ed was saying, I, I'm trying to figure out if we're having a situation where, uh, the organization is trying to force off a board member, or if the board member wants to leave, but it sounds like it's some combination of the two.
It's some combination of the two, I mean, if, prior when I was involved in, they were trying to force them off, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I agree, I don't, I don't think the outside board should have a decision on who the, you know, we say who we feel like they have seat, it's just that simple. And then just for clarity sake, too, when I, they talked to me, and then I went and talked to Mark about it, you know, the next day, or just so he knew what was going on, just so he didn't get blindsided by it or anything like that, so he knew what was going on, too, and we discussed it.
But, but once again, then why didn't they contact me?
And I, and I will disagree with that.
If you don't want to be on, and I don't want to.
That's up to you guys, I mean, if somebody wants it.
It's up to you.
Yeah, it's all.
Well, I'd be, I guess my only point would be then, I would, I would like a letter, you know, a statement that you need to, to send me a letter when the meetings are given, I mean, send a letter to Suzie requiring that she sends me notification of the meeting, I mean, otherwise, the same thing's gonna go on.
Well, is it gonna be a very good working relationship going beyond this? We, you know, um, because obviously there's probably some hard feelings there.
I can still go to meetings, I go to meetings every day, that there's hard feelings, and when we're done, we're done, you know?
Well, and I think, you know, to everyone's point, I think we've got to strike a balance between trying to make a working relationship versus bending over for, you know.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
When they asked me that time, I just said no, put up with it until the end of the year, let me make a change, and there was a change after that. I just didn't feel, I, I think it was in August, I thought I didn't feel, four months left to the end of the year, and it was all.
When, when would your appointment be out? I mean, I guess, if you're.
End of the year.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
End of the year.
Probably.
It's either, yeah, it's either reset every year, every two, I honestly don't know. And the only, like, again, for clarity's sake, the only reason I put us on the, on the agenda is because I discussed with Mark, and he's, since I thought we should have this discussion.
Okay.
Otherwise, I would have told him, you know, this is what it is, too.
But if you don't want to be on, do something different, it's up to you.
Well, like I said, I would be on, but I need to be notified, and if, if she needs a letter from the commission to inform her that she needs to inform me, then I'm more than willing to, I mean, it's a great group of guys. But it's kind of hard to, to go to a meeting when nobody tells you when it is.
There is no term.
It's just, it's just standing. No terms, so we just, you're the point until you're not appointed again.
Representation.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, seeing as you're the appointee, I, I feel most comfortable going along with what you desire. I mean, I, I think that should really follow you, if you want to stay on.
I, I, I wanted to be on the board, yeah, I absolutely, you know, I had people request me to be on the board.
Okay. So should we, should we draft a letter then, or what, what would be the inclination, I guess, of the, of the mission?
Should we, how do we make ends?
That's what you wish.
Is it, is it possible that we can try to, try to be a little bit more cordial in our requests first, before sending a letter? And I know you've already asked, but maybe I'm a little on the, I mean, it's just, just that I think, I think we're gonna come across a lot of what Jeff is saying about a working relationship.
Yeah, if, and that's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
If, if you can, if, if can, if we make a phone call and, and get it set, I'm fine with that, absolutely. I just didn't like the fact that, you know, we talked about it after the meeting, and I wasn't there, I mean.
Yeah, and I guess, I, I'll come from the aspect of, my only concern is, is that if we, and I, I, I agree, we, we don't need to bend backwards or anything, I mean, we make the decision, because that's our decision, but if we send a letter and it still doesn't change, you know, we don't really have any recourse, so to speak, I mean, you know, other than, other than to then just make a change, you know?
I think it's, we're sending taxpayer dollars that way, right?
Yeah, 15,000.
So, I mean, we want representation there, obviously, yeah.
Well, I think part of it is the lack of having a quorum at times to, to conduct business. There's a, a limited number of voting members on that committee, and.
Yeah, how big is it? I, I don't even know.
It's not a real big one.
It's not a big one, right, I'm not.
Three, three or five or four? Just kind of about the.
And, you know, I think we have a city and a, a county representative, and I don't know if the Lake Ridge and Anglers have, um, have a board number.
Do they have a board?
The park board has a board as well.
Yeah. Yeah, because they take care of a lot of their, their contracts with the Queen and stuff like that, so.
The Cali end, right?
Yeah.
Cali City Park Board, and then the Anglers, and I'm thinking if there's one more or not, I don't know if there is, maybe it might just be four.
But you are, you know.
You know, like I said.
You can work with them, stay.
If, if that gets a phone call that says, you know, I, I need to get a letter, I will absolutely stay. You know, I don't miss meetings, it's not that I'm missing these meetings because I don't want to go.
You know, Mark, I'm gonna have to disagree there, because certainly weren't at the Fair Board meeting last night.
I was unaware of that one.
There, there again, I don't know if, if you get those emails, like, hey, if you're not getting an email, and, you know, I don't know how Rodney gets let know, because he doesn't do email either.
By the way, I'd have been there, Jeff.
Well, you know, there's, it was on the front page of the paper for several times, you know, and the little meeting notices there. You know, and I, and I think these committee meetings, these committees, they're important enough for us to, to attend them, and if we, if we can't make it, it's understandable, because we're all busy. But by all means, let somebody know, you know, I'd be happy to fill in if I can make it. And if I can't, you know, I'll let you know, but I think it's important for the county to, to have representation on the committees that were asked to, to sit on, and, you know, if, if they're sending notices out via email, and you're not getting those notices, I'm not sure how to, how to deal with that, Mark.
And you deal with it, and somebody else can, you know, I'm fine with that. I have asked Adam to go to several board meetings for me, like I said, I don't want to meet the guy who's missing meetings, because I've had Adam, I've called Adam and said, hey, I can't make this meeting, oh, you take it, so.
Because there's been a couple of different agendas, at least.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I try to do the same, kind of?
Yeah.
Can we work on, was it Jeff, or, oh, the, the, my.
No, things, things like that work, but we need, we need to communicate, you know, um, as a board, as a committee, whatever you want to call it, um, so.
I understand the frustration, I, I, in March, we failed to achieve a quorum at the library board, and that. I understand the frustration, I, I, well, in March, we failed to achieve a quorum at the library board, and that, I mean, I understand it is tough, but, but I also understand the other side of it, which is, I feel like I'm running from meeting to meeting.
All right.
And it's a lot, you know? So...
Yeah.
There's a comical situation, if somebody come along wanting to form another committee, I'm like...
No more committees, we've got it done.
And no more committees. Trim someone down, they're like, meet every other month, and they're just like...
Let's make, let's make committees, to trim committees.
Yeah. The committee of committees.
At least, if we trim them down, then they can't do their business anymore.
We, we, we need the, the Donald Trump ruling committees, where if once formed, two have to give us...
I also think that as a political subdivision, and I'm sure that's what the Lake Access Committee would be, since they're publicly funded to an extent, they, they should publish those meetings at the first of the year for their, for the downer year, just like everybody else has to. You know, they, they send them to the auditor, they send them to the paper, wha- whatever, well, they, you know, it should be done.
Yeah.
You know, you get my, you know...
Part of the public, open records.
Right, yeah, that's, that's part of the whole public records meeting law, is that public entities publish, set their meeting dates the first part of the year. And, I mean, we do it as a county commission. You know, come January or whatever, we set those meeting dates, and, you know, uh...
Luxury.
Right, um, so, and, and I think, I think, uh, most political subdivisions do that. And I think the Lake Access Committee should be no exception. They should be able to set their meetings, whether it's quarterly, whether it's every two months, whether it's whatever. They should be able to set those in January, give them to Candy, give them to Linda over at the city, and Terry at the park board, and we can make arrangements to go. You know, that, that would be the easy thing to do. You know, is to have a twelve-month calendar in front of me in January, and then I can put those committee ma- dates down in my little Franklin Chevy deal, or whatever I'm using for a calendar.
Well, is it, is it a quarterly meeting? Is it a monthly, is it?
I think I would consider...
I think during the busy season, they're monthly.
I think they're...
I believe that.
I think they're monthly.
Then they slow down now, I, I don't know. Every other month, but, oh, they only approve bills, they do it every other month.
I think they, I think it's a monthly.
Okay, I was...
'Cause they have that cleaning contract, that they have to approve bills for that.
Yeah, they have a month, they suppose in the summer for the cleaning contract.
And that was at one of the last meetings, when I, when I did find out about it, I did Google, and that was the warning of the contract for the fish equipment stations.
Okay. So, I circle back to the initial question of what, what are the intents, what, what is, what is the intent of the commission? What would we like to do?
Is it, is it possible for us to table the issue, uh, and give it a meeting or two of this body, uh, and see if we can't work it out cordially to every party's, you know, that's fine.
I, I think that's what's...
It's agreeable, you know? And if it's still an issue, several, one or two meetings from now, we can, we can revisit and then take whatever actually appropriate.
See if there's a motion on it, do you have a motion on that?
I'll make that motion, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table discussion on the Lake Access Board amendment. My only question would be, how do we, how do we wanna approach it? Would you like, would you like me to go visit with Suzie, or, you know, obviously, I'll take that on being on the chair.
Sure, thank you.
Sit on a visit.
Thank you.
And, and we can figure out some type of an agreement, see where we're gonna go, so... Okay. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote my same, aye?
Aye.
Same, same, motion carries. Actually, tabling motion isn't a debate, also. Shouldn't ask for discussion, that's good. Uh, okay, next on the new business, approve law enforcement center reentry center bill. I mean, they're large. I think it's ninety-seven thousand and change for the law enforcement center, and ten thousand and change for the reentry center.
You want them individually, or wanna, uh, work together?
Uh, I guess, I think it's fine to approve them together.
We'll go approve.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bills to the reentry center and the law enforcement center, further discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown? Brett?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Mycog?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Approve list of bills for the highway department. Is that what this disaster closeout is?
Um, yeah, there was one that was in your packet, and then an additional one that went to, brought to Jackie.
Okay, where's, well, this is the additional then.
Yeah.
One for fifty, which one, for total pay, one, is one for eleven?
Okay, second, I'm trying to pull it up here.
Or is it this bottom number?
Well, that's just that, okay, yeah.
Yeah, the one is...
'Cause I just had her do two separate, because we thought we were done with the first one, and then she brought it.
So, these are dollar figures that are gonna go back to each of those entities, then? That we had sitting in the banking, once we're just closing off the week.
Or just beam of deals?
Yep.
And what goes up?
Yeah.
Yeah, you get there, yeah.
Yeah, we have, okay, we have motion approved, and we have a second. Okay, both lists. Okay, further discussion. Uh, seeing none, since we're transparent dollars, I'll ask for a roll call.
Brett?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Mycog?
Aye. Motion carries. Um, visitors and delegations.
Hi.
Aye. Good to see you.
What's going on at the general meeting?
Oh, don't ask. Does anybody know about a meeting that's supposed to be coming up around the twenty-fourth of April?
I don't know.
Oh, is that what you're gonna, you're gonna discuss?
Like, which meeting are you speaking of?
The one about landowners and, um, lake stabilization?
That would be, I believe, the one that we're, we have on our desk.
Oh, man. I, I, I've heard rumors, but I have any information?
You can say there's a couple of different things going on on the twenty-fourth, so it could be...
I think, I think you fall under valid commu-, or valued, valued community, yes, so...
Well, thank you. Can I, may I read this?
Of course. Uh, okay, announcements. I know Jeff...
Yeah, um, Devil's Lake Outlets Advisory Committee meets tomorrow in Carrington at the, uh, Conservancy District Office at one o'clock. This is that legislative made body that, uh, made up of six or so people represented from in the Devil's Lake Basin, and then six or so from the downstream side of things, Valley City, Lisbon, Barrow, Grand Forks. And then they have two non-voting members, uh, one from Minnesota, one from Manitoba. And then the state engineer, Garland Urbilley, will be the chair of that. Uh, it kinda changes with administrations, Governor Dollrippe wanted to chair that himself. Governor Burgum has taken a different step, and decided to give that to, in the hands of the state water commission. So, they basically talked about outlet operations, you get a, a previous year, um, synopsis on how the pumps operated, any maintenance issues, they had any downstream concerns, um, mitigation dollars, there's that, there's an outlet mitigation fund that's set up for landowners downstream to file a to the state for dollars if they have, um, bank stabilization issues, or lots of crops due to, due to the operation of the state outlets. Very difficult to prove, but, um, they do have a fund set up for that. But that is one o'clock tomorrow, and I think everybody would be more than happy to be invited. A stance that the joint board has taken is that we'd like to see the pumps continue to operate as much as possible, given the constraints on water quality, water quantity downstream, um, to their full potential, you know? We, we still have a lot of ground to make up from a Ramsey County perspective, I think. I think Beth was telling me that there is something like fifty-six or fifty-eight thousand acres that are still in that, um, reduced tax category from land that's either inundated or close to inundation. So, that's a lot, that's a lot of acres that Ramsey County would have. So, if we operated the pumps to their capacity, you know, I'm sure the outlet advisory committee will set a, a goal for the pumps for this season. And that goal is based primarily on the capacity of the pumps. It's not saying this is the elevation that the old advisory or any committee would like to see the lake at, but this is what we believe that the capacity of the pumps can capably reduce the lake level to.
And what's our current lake level?
Forty, forty-nine, six.
And that would probably be, uh, you know, I, I mentioned before the meeting that Mayor Johnson was on this morning at coffee time, and he said that forty-eight, so I'm wondering if that must be from the state water commission, must be kinda hoping that's the target for the year.
Well, that, that was the, the target last year, and it, it would be probably a reasonable goal, um, something that we could achieve this year with the operation of the outlets. Um, you, you know, to, to stretch it, we could possibly stretch it to a forty-seven and a half. But that's given if the pumps were to operate at full capacity for the entire operating season, which we're already two weeks into, and the, you know, no sign of, of them getting in a monsoon, because ice has to be off the lake, and the river has to be a little flood stage downstream. So, you know, I don't think there's any flooding concerns downstream, but certainly with thirty-six, thirty-five inches of ice on the lake, it's gonna be a lot. Last year, we had this meeting in, in May, but it was asked by the agricultural producers to have it a little earlier, so they'd get in, be able to attend the meeting without parking the driver, and doing the spring's work, so...
Yeah, which is a little useful. Okay. Uh, any further announcements, I guess? I'm trying to think of anything. Uh, it's the only thing I would say is, in fact, that twenty, two different announcements. Uh, tomorrow night, if anybody has a chance, I guess tomorrow evening, uh, the community shelter is doing a homeless, uh, simulation again, like they did previously in March, 'cause they had such good attendance, they're hoping that they're doing an apology simulation, not homelessness, it's a secret property. Uh, and apparently it went over, uh, was very educational, the one they had in March, so they decided to do it, uh, a second run, so they're doing that tomorrow night. Uh, and then next week, and I, I can't remember the date, I believe it's the twenty-fourth as well, uh, is the Free Through Recovery, is having a community collaborative meeting to kinda inform the community what's going on, and to hear any concerns about what's going on with that. Uh, and that'll be at the Heritage Center, uh, sometime in the afternoon, it's like a four-thirty or five o'clock start, I can't recall specifically. So, just something to have on your radar, and I'm sure we have, it's probably, it's, it's been announced, let's put it that way, so... Uh, we can, can I hear you right now? Any other announcements?
Well, at least you meet tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, if anybody's interested in all of them. There's a, uh, Home Rule Charter Committee meeting at one-thirty on Wednesday, April twenty-fifth. Uh, the final draft of, or not the final, I'm sorry, the initial draft of the charter has been completed, and now we're gonna go back, and I think there's gonna be some vivid discussion on, uh, how best to proceed in, in paring it down, and ensuring that it's the right document for this, uh, county. Uh, so I'm excited for that, and I hope that everyone who wants to attend attends. And in addition to that, I wanted to say that the Heritage Center had its annual gala, uh, last weekend, and it was a very good success. Uh, we raised, uh, very, very close to the same amount that we would raise last year, and given that we had so much upheaval with respect to the board, and with respect to, uh, the employees that we had there, um, I think that counts as a good success. There were a lot of young people in attendance, which was impressive to me, uh, not something I've seen a lot at many of these events. Uh, with respect to the library, as I mentioned, we failed to have a quorum at the last meeting, we managed to have a quorum for this meeting. And I sent out an email to the board members, that all of them basically saying I was very disappointed in the fact that they seemed perennially unable to make their meetings, and to let them know that if this commitment was too much for them, uh, that, that they might consider stepping aside to, to allow for some of them might have the time to do it, to do it. In addition to that, uh, we are moving forward on the Memorial Garden, we had two bids, uh, from different, uh, local contractors to, to, to do the work on that. Uh, and we'll be moving forward with that, there was some great discussion on that, and we're very excited to have some, some drawings to look at and that sort of thing. I think that might be it.
Okay. Any further announcements?
Unless you wanna talk about the planning hearing, the public hearing that we had for the planning commission. And that was, when was that last?
Last Tuesday, yeah.
Last Tuesday night, yeah. We're gonna try to get together again, and hopefully finish that up. The difficult thing is trying to get everybody's schedules to work out. There are some things at the end that we need to, to button up and, and have some further discussion on. We may have a meeting of the, of the planning commission, um, prior to the public hearing, just to make sure that everybody's on board of what we decided that night. You know, did we make the right decisions, you know, was everybody tired? And, you know, it, it was a long, long meeting, and, you know, towards the end, where you, maybe approved some things, I don't know if everybody fully either understood them, or was in favor of them, so, something that, you know, as we move forward. And the other thing I think that, that committee can, can look at would be the medical marijuana issues. Kerry has seventy, oh, three or four different county, um, that have adopted some regulations concerning medical marijuana. And we can take a look at those and see how, what we wanna move ahead with, with something like that. You know, about involving Joel, and, you know, so, have some, as a committee, we could recommend to, to send him to put in, in the, uh, packet where it belongs.
The, the state has, the health has something, it was medical marijuana?
The, the health department has something, and I think that's where these other counties have based their, their plans on.
They want a lot of that one.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think some counties have, have added additional stuff, just because the, 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 the health departments are kinda like the baseline guidelines in terms of, you have to add this, and this, and this. Well, you know, I don't, it, it doesn't specify specifically how far, you know, if you wanted to keep it away from a city, or if you wanted to require more additional security, and things like that.
Right.
Uh, I actually, I was reading a book that, last, Morton County, actually, already had, a, uh...
And turned it down, didn't they?
They turned it down. A grow facility permit application, passed.
Grow facility?
Yes, for the large grow facility out next to St. Anthony, or something like that.
Where they, they anticipate, like, two?
There's two grow facilities across the state, but we don't know where they're gonna be, and part of the contingency with the grow facility is, how I understood it in the article, was they can't move forward with their application until they have approval by whoever the zoning board is in that area, that they can cite it in that location.
Right.
So, that group that was going to possibly have one is now kinda back to the drawing board in terms of if they could put it someplace else, or...
But I, I know there's, there's some local interest, um, with both dispensary and grow facility within our area, so it's something that we need to get...
Well, and we're, we're definitely gonna have a dispensary, so...
Yeah. And, and as we spoke about previously, I think the, the chances of having a dispensary outside of town are probably less so than having it in town, but the grow facility, I guess, in my mind, is more of a concern in terms of where is it? And, and Morton County's concept was, uh, where the location was, was too far from main, you know, like, from Mandan, so like, if there was some type of a break-in or some type of a concern that the sheriff's department was gonna be stretched, then getting there consistently within a timely manner.
Sure.
Are we, are we interested in a grow facility, or stringent, do you want the zoning?
Oh, you haven't had that discussion yet?
Um...
I, I don't know if it's...
Is it a money maker, or is it, can you collect tax?
There's, there's gotta be property taxes on anything that's built there.
Maybe create a tax, tax, and, and the list online, that maybe you'd expect to be more than that, but I don't know how much more that would...
Yeah. My only concern would be that if we don't have any kind of zoning enabled for it, then we've, if, if it's the intent of the people of the county that they don't wanna hear, and they show up at a public hearing for it, there's no way, so...
I agree, I agree with that, but how stringent do you wanna make zoning rules, you know, do you wanna?
Well, and I think...
So, you scare everybody off, or you wanna, you wanna rile them, you know? Maybe they fail to follow the zone, you know?
And I think, uh, to, to speak to that, um, and because I sit on that board, I think that, that I don't know for certainty that all of the different board members have had a, kind of a meeting of the minds and understanding, at least, I don't feel that I have obtained a... that I don't know for certainty that all of the different board members have had a kind of a meeting of their minds and understanding, at least I don't feel that I have obtained an understanding of where some of the board members are facing, sort of their philosophical arguments towards or against things, uh, and that probably is my own fault. But I do have some significant concerns with some of the decisions that have been made by the board, and I may boast proof of it, so.
Not just about growing facilities and marijuana, then, I mean.
That's right, yeah.
Well, and that's a good discussion, yeah, cause we haven't finalized anything as of yet, so, those are discussions we can, we can continue to have as we move forward.
Yeah, right, yeah, since it's an ordinance, it's still gonna have to be read twice a year for public hearing and everything else, there's still plenty of time to iron out any wrinkles or details, or, or anything of that nature, so. But it's always easier when you have a really good quality document, and everyone can get on board when, when it comes to this level, so.
Yeah, something easy to, easy to follow, and usable, user-friendly, you know, uh, don't put it on the shelf and, um, let it catch, catch for forty years.
Well, I think that's the next discussion afterwards, is, in, in all the discussions and talking with different people from the townships that are gonna still retain their own zoning authority, is how do we administer the zoning and planning, and how do we help support the townships to do it in their own right? And I think that's something we're gonna have to talk about once we get this enacted.
Right.
How we can enable that to happen somehow, but not incurring a ton of cost, hopefully.
Right.
Well, the city had a meeting two weeks ago, and if I remember, they had to be a thousand feet from a daycare, a thousand feet from a school, so, the kinda conversation was, they basically ruled all of downtown out, you know, if you have a daycare over there, and so a school over here. They basically, you know, so that's pushed already out probably to the, how do we do quarter, I mean. This wasn't a grow facility. No, this was retail.
Just the dispensary, yeah.
I think they modified that to just say school.
Just school. And I know they were discussing school and church at that time, too, yeah.
Yeah.
Boy, how you get a thousand feet from a school or church, boy, that'd be a lot of. Plus on the avenues, there's a lot of churches in town, too, those are fresh days, so.
You think they'd wanna downtown, their downtown improvements, would that be wrong, or?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be a little concerned as a, as a owner of some real estate about the blowback that did if I put somebody into one of my buildings.
Yeah, I, I'm just asking, that's all. Yeah, cause you can't advertise or anything on the building, you can't have, only advertise one.
Which is kind of interesting.
No, no, can't, they. Flashing pot, police first.
It's not like, it's not like when you go to Las Vegas, and they literally have bellboards, like, hey, come buy some, some beer.
What was the name of that street in San Francisco, they had them out there.
Yeah.
Flashing pot.
Come buy some, come buy some.
Then I have heard, too, that they're gonna put some humongous permit fees out there, too, cause there's a lot of money there.
Non-refundable.
Non-refundable money.
Appropriate.
The city, is what you're saying.
I mean, one of the, one of the things that I think about the zoning ordinance is, is we may wanna have it worded in such a way that whatever applies to medical-specific marijuana will also apply to fully legalized marijuana, because if trends continue, we'd just be going back and rewriting that document in five years' time. And that's, that's not making a statement about what my own personal philosophy is at all, I'm just saying that it looks like she's going that way.
Certainly does, but if you look at the, the vote numbers on medical marijuana, you know, overwhelmingly succeeded in a public vote. And, you know, unfortunately, we, we've, in, in the state, we've drug our feet, and, and I think that we've drug it long enough where it's gonna turn out to a recreational. And, you know, medical, recreational, it's not gonna matter.
Yeah, and I, and I mean, if I was a betting man, I'd say, we're gonna get to recreational even here.
Yeah.
And, and if that's the case, like, just instead of saying, you know, medical marijuana dispensary, just say marijuana dispensary, and then you're good, right?
Right. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Motion. Second.